The Board of Health's decision, you know, if they were to say it would be okay, I would trust that it would, you know, so.
Is there any way to encourage, and I certainly don't want to second guess the Board of Directors, but if something out of the ordinary like that would arise, wouldn't you think that they would come and ask somebody else before they?
Before they made that decision?
Well, I mean, Mr. Stewart, Mark Stewart was there at the hearing, and I reviewed his report, and he vehemently argued with them that they can't do this.
Yeah.
So, and they did it, and it was, I think, unanimous vote.
Wow, I'm sure, I'm shocked.
So.
Yeah, I mean.
So you see why I put Dave and I in a unique situation that we kind of need to make some decision here.
Oh, absolutely, oh, sure, sure.
So are you recommending we do nothing and just see what the Board of Health says?
I would not recommend filing suit because I don't think we would prevail, and I think the cost would be strong.
Well, and it would be embarrassing, yeah.
Yeah, right, I don't know if it's, I mean, I think historically, the city has sued the Board of Adjustments, but I think it's something that, yeah, I think it just doesn't look good necessarily.
It doesn't.
I think do nothing or text amendment would be what my recommendations would be, and maybe discuss with the Board of Adjustments why this is, you know, maybe a slippery slope that they don't want to go down.
Continue training.
Yeah.
Mr. Blankenship.
I like that slippery slope, yeah, that was good.
Yeah, I think in this instance, probably allowing this to go on is not going to cause any real harm to the city, so doing nothing probably makes a lot of sense here. I would probably be disinclined to do a text amendment, though, because there might be a situation come up in the future where we do think it has more harm, and if we amend our text to specifically give discretion, we weaken our legal position in the future. So I'd be inclined to not do the text amendment and just kind of do nothing.
Can I say something?
Okay.
I do want to make council aware that we have had, and not too recent past, we've had another request for the area over there for a, people actually bought about 10 acres, and we've told them no about constructing a home there. So when they find out that this one has been done, look for this to come back. So that's the one thing that, you know, we've already had other requests that we have turned down, that Mr. Sue had turned down, they did not get appealed. We know how word spreads, just know that, that it's out there, that other people have already asked to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, I wish David Han were here tonight because sometimes a piece of property can be unique, and you can find something differentiating about it, because I know when we gave permission for a gas station on Dixie Highway to where Sunoco is right now, that was a unique situation, had to be so many feet this and that, and I was just wondering if there was any way, you know, that David could look at this piece of property and find something unique about it to say, it's in that particular situation with this much footage or whatever, I mean, I don't know.
That is, that's a great point.
I thought he sent something out to us that said, they were talking about the expense of easements and such, but I thought he said that that wasn't a problem in that particular area, so I don't, I don't know, I just, it's been a while since I read that email that he sent us, but.
I did hear that the easiest route for them to get an easement to connect, the sewer is too high to be able to make that distance of fall.
See, I mean, that could be something unique in that particular situation.
You know, that is a great point, and there is something else unique there, and that is that there is an existing leach field that serves the, serves the house.
So maybe that would save us from this other situation, because I'd hate to see us get attacked because we let somebody do it.
And I mean, I think the other thing, too, that we do have a limited time, you know, we've only got 30 days to appeal that, and we're probably only about a week away.
Yeah, July 25th, we'd have to.
For making that decision.
Yeah, so I agree with Mr. Blankenship, I think that if this 10-acre tract goes through and they go through the Board of Adjustments, and the Board of Adjustments grants it, then maybe we look at that. I don't think we've lost any legal footing by not appealing this, there's no necessarily legal precedent that's been created, because I think there is individual factors involved, so I'm not worried about that. But obviously, if we appealed it and lost.
Then we've created a bad precedent.
We've created a real bad situation, and with text amendment, amending it to give the Board of Adjustments the ability to do this, we have no legal authority.
Renee?
Do they record the Board of Adjustment meetings?
Yes.
Thank you, Frank.
We don't publish them, though, I've never seen a recording.
But I mean, if somebody wanted to.
They're recorded, because when we dealt with the appeal that was filed by Corporax, we had the transcript, so yes, they are recorded.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, Mrs. Fettie?
One other thing, Jack, you had said that they had talked about whether or not they had the ability to make that decision, and they knew they didn't have the ability to make it, but they did it anyways, is that accurate?
No, yeah, I mean, they, I have not seen the minutes of their findings of fact yet, okay, so that's, that's, they have not approved those minutes, I have not seen those minutes. But my understanding is, is the appeal was on the grounds of the statute, having vague language, discretionary language, and the Board of Adjustments, in my opinion, shall mean shall, but they obviously felt that they had some wiggle room there.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say, I think it's a little strong to say that they operated outside of their authority, I think they had the authority to probably hear the appeal, but it, I mean, if, if I would have been on the Board of Adjustments, I would have said, hey, this is not one of the provisions that are appealable, I can't hear this appeal, but they chose to.
Okay.
I mean, that would be one of the grounds, if we did choose to sue, we would say that they did not have the authority to hear that appeal, but the city did take their money, this applicant's money, and this applicant did pay for the appeal, so I think that's a tough argument for us to win.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a learning experience, and we'll just need to make sure that the Board is aware in the future.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing no action, right, because I would have to do something in the next seven days, so I'm hearing no action, okay.
See a lot of heads nodding, okay. All right, then, anything further to report, do you know, Mr. Fields?
I think that's it.
Okay, all right, so you've heard the reports of our committees, do I entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented, motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Pitts, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next, are there any reports from our representatives this evening, Mrs. Cowell?
The Historical Society, the walking tour of Covington and the Floodwall is tomorrow, I don't have a time on here, but I would imagine if you went to the Historical Society's website, you could probably find that time. The annual yard sale is August the 5th, and that's from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I would think they are still taking donations, if you have anything good that you would like to donate to the society to help them for their expenses. And then the next Historical Society meeting is August the 9th at 7:00 PM, and it's a tour of the Talafaro Home or Tolliver Home on Graves Avenue.
Tolliver, yeah.
He does Tolliver, but the, his father did Talafaro, because my husband worked for Talafaro, so that's why.
Yes, we, we know, Vicky.
I did both names in case anybody recognizes either one.
Yeah, Vicky, we know, yeah.
But anyway, I would imagine that they will meet there at 7 o'clock at that house.
And it is a beautiful home.
It is, it's beautiful, and it's the original, but he did the outside.
Well, sort of.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the initial old farmhouse is original, and then they built on the back and built up and over it.
Yes.
Sixty rooms or some crazy.
And then here's another event that I don't have a time on this paper here, it's presentation at Earlanger Branch Library on the Civil War era in Earlanger and Elsmere, and that's August the 22nd, and again, check their website for the times for that, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Fettie?
Yeah, I attended the mayor's group meeting on Saturday, just a representative from Duke Energy presented one of their new initiatives, they're going to be coming around in the next couple of months, and they're actually going to present at our next council meeting to talk about how they're going to switch all of the electric meters to smart meters, and this is going to be a change that's coming, they're starting in Kenton County, it'll go through Kenton County, Boone County, and then Campbell County, but I have the literature that's going to be passed out when it's your streets time, you're going to get a postcard a week prior, and then it, there's really no action unless you want to opt out, and as long as your meter's on the outside of the house, they're going to do it automatically, and you'll get a little door hanger saying it's done, and should be a pretty simple, simple process, but a representative from Duke will be here to explain the process in great detail with us next council meeting.
Thank you, you know, just out of curiosity, by show of hands of council members, who has Duke Electric? I mean, I know I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay.
Do you have Owen?
We have Owen.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, okay.
Duke Gas.
Yeah, Duke Gas, but Owen Electric.
It's not touching the gas meters.
Yeah, okay, so it looks like that's, whoops, the east side has, has Owen, okay. All right, thank you. Any other reports? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the reports of city operations, city engineer, Mr. Vioxx, anything to report?
Yes, sir. You heard Mr. Skidmore describe the projects as they're moving forward, one project, though it is, it's moving fairly rapidly and has come into conclusion is the Dixie Highway underpass safety project, I hope you've been by there to see that the improvement's moving forward, it'll drastically change in the next few days, Stewart Iron Works is doing the railing for the area on the sidewalk around the veterinarian building and the handicap ramp and the stairway, there's furniture to be placed out there on two locations, and also lighting that's been ordered from Duke, and when the railing is completed, there's going to be a brick facing on the wall, so with all that and the addition of some additional landscaping that's yet to be installed, the project is going to change the appearance up, or has changed the appearance up there quite a bit. The only thing that's going to happen that you authorized, is you did authorize a change order to replace the sidewalk under the underpass on both sides to remove the drainage issues that are there, we have delayed the contractor till the bridge project on, this Renssens Bridge is done because of the volume of traffic on Dixie Highway, we can't, can't work under the underpass at this particular point, our contractor's agreed to hold that price, and he will do it as soon as the bridge project is completed. The only other thing that we've discussed recently is there is money in the budget to improve some sidewalks or construct some sidewalks on Narrows Road, but they were associated with a grant application, the grant application was denied, and we're suggesting that we continue to use the money that was set aside for Narrows Road to make the, some improvements over there and some gaps that actually will complete some of the sidewalk, and unless there's some objection to that sometime during this budget year, we'll be, we'll be attacking that, too, that's all I have.
Yeah, and just to clarify, there, did you, did you mention to me that you thought that the, the money that was allocated would be used probably mostly to purchase easements and encroachments and things like that?
Not necessarily, it was, it was matching funds to the grant application that would apply to that project over there, it's designated for sidewalk improvements on Narrows Road, the grant, grant application was denied, so we're suggesting that we're going to have to move forward at some point to make some improvements over there, so we have some gaps open that will complete some circuits in that sidewalk system over there, and we're suggesting we use that money to start doing that, because we don't think we're going to be getting, given approval for the grant application with the next time either.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, just one quick question, and it always bothers me, and I don't live over there, but I drive in that area quite a bit, because my daughter lives over there, there is, there's probably maybe a 40 to 50-foot gap from, is it Deer Chase down to Narrows?
Yeah.
And there's no sidewalk there.
Yeah.
I mean, you can walk all around the whole flipping town, you can walk all through Lake Mont, you can come, you know, up and down, but, but right there.
Well, it's, it's more than just right there.
Yeah.
There's about 12 gaps over there.
Yeah.
And they're all relatively small, and they were all included in this, in this application.
Okay, so that is one of the.
So we were going to take the ones that made the most sense and utilize the money to start closing some of the gaps.
Gotcha, gotcha, it just bugs me to death, I mean, I'm thinking, if I were a runner, that would just burn me up.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it there, where you're talking about, is along the List Farm, you know, and our, our, our hope is that, you know, if that gets developed, that they would finish that sidewalk.
Well, actually, no, it's, it's, it's not on List Farm, it's across the street, it's from, from Deer Chase down to Narrows, on the opposite side of the List Farm.
And from, and from Bright, there's a gap between Brightleaf entrance and the Narrows Hills Estates, there's a gap there, there's a gap at Deer Chase that you're describing, and there's actually a gap on.
On to Deer Chase.
On the, coming off of Turkeyfoot Road, where you can't walk from the sidewalk, on the sidewalk up to one side, and you have to cross in the middle block, so there's a lot of gaps.
Yeah, okay.
It's a work in progress. All right, city attorney, Mr. Gatlin, anything to report?
Just briefly, if council recalls, about a year, year and a half ago, we did a text amendment to create as a conditional use, a towing zone in the BP-1 zone for Smiths Towing, and Corporax and the Brenda Moores and a few other neighboring business owners filed suit against Smiths Towing, and as well as against the Earlanger Board of Adjustments, and it was through, it was truly throw the kitchen sink, finding every possible error that they thought was made. We filed a motion to dismiss on that lawsuit very quickly after the lawsuit was filed, it actually sort of sat dormant for about a year, and then the judge ruled last month and granted our motion to dismiss on every possible ground, and then the appellate period just ran about four days ago, so this issue is done, there was absolutely nothing in that case that our Board of Adjustments did wrong, that we did wrong in passing the ordinance, or anything that KCPC did wrong, so that, that issue is done, and Smiths Towing has been operating for about a year now, and I'm sure they breathe a sigh of relief once this issue was over.
I'm sure they did.
Because they were not allowing this lawsuit to slow them down, they were just plowing forward, moving full speed ahead, so that issue now is done, and that, that lawsuit has been closed down, so I just wanted to report on that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, city council attorney, Mr. Wickman?
I don't have anything to report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, city administrator, Mr. Fields, okay.
Got all the serious suits in the back.
Yeah.
So you know, when I get down here, you might as well pack a lunch, right?
Absolutely.
That's what Kathy just said.
Order in, yeah.
Yeah, you may have.
But tonight, I would like to welcome the county personnel back here, Judge Executive, Chris Knuckelman, Joe Schreiber, the county administrator, Steve Hensley, the emergency manager, and Tommy Thompson, who is the newly appointed, I guess in the past six, eight months, director of the Kenton County 911 Center, welcome tonight, be prepared, it'll be your turn here in a minute. I gave you a couple sheets of paper, if you remember back a couple months ago, you gave us the authority to begin, I guess, exploring the options of whether or not we wanted to continue to explore options to combine dispatch centers with Kenton County. We have made, I think, significant progress in that direction, and I give you a couple sheets of paper, one of them is I've updated it from the time that I initially handed it out to you, when you all gave us the approval to continue down this path, so I want to walk through this with you, real quickly, the first one, it's got the first sheet, it's got the revenue in the front of it, and the thing I want to mention about the 911 cell phone money right away is that that money has been setting in a fund, okay, this is the cell phone 911 money, I know the audit isn't completely done, but what we believe is, we believe right now there is a little over $500,000 setting in that fund, okay, we did that four years ago, knowing that there would be some improvements that would have to be made, whether to a radio system, when there was talk about doing that, we knew there would be some cost involved, plus, we knew that we'd have to buy all of our first responders' radios, if in fact that radio system went in, so along with our partners, we decided to set that money aside so that we would have it in case these things now that are going to come to pass next year are, are here on us, so we are prepared for that, that'll come up again. You can see what our franchise fee brings in, you can see the fee that Elsmere pays us, and if you heard tonight, this $114,000 that we have attributed to the City of Crescent Springs in that contract, right now, our contract is $1,111,000 a year, right, we are proposing to already drop that to 953, right, again, that 953, if they accept that contract, if we go with Kenton County, then it would drop another 108, okay, from that number of 953, so this 114 that's in there is all coming from that 953, if in fact that stays, okay, so it was actually in the 111, or $1,111,000, so that number, they were, we were asked at one point in time to look at it and see, and attribute some number to the cost of providing that dispatch to the City of Crescent Springs, we did it proportionally by population, and we came up with about that 15%, about what it serves, our center was serving, the Elsmere, Earlanger, and Crescent Springs, so that's where that number came from, if you can see the next part of this, it's our cost, all right, so we got about $902,000 in personnel this year, right, and the CTI budget, that's Communications, Technology and Innovation budget, we have about $131,000, almost $132,000 in that, that is, that is directly attributed to the dispatch operations. If in fact we stay on our own, this next page talks about the estimated one-time cost of the radio system for us, originally, we had said we wanted three dispatch radio, or dispatch consoles, we have now taken that number down to two, okay, so that's why, that's why I lowered, that number was originally $330,000, it's now $230,000, where we are suggesting that if in fact we do stay on, two radio consoles is all you would need, the new radio recorder's on there, and the radios for police, fire, and public works, that's the big part of this, but what I want to make sure everybody understands is no matter what happens in the future, we're still going to have to buy those radios, there's no ifs, or, ands, or buts about that, okay, so, along with those one-time costs, okay, added to our yearly expense in dispatch, is going to be a bond payment, that bond payment, the county is bonding the new radio system, so proportionally, they've broken that down by resident, for all the residents in Kenton County, and it's about $4.80 per resident, okay, that is why these numbers come up this way, so Earlanger's proportionate share of that would be the 90,258, Elsmere's share would be 40,987, Crescent Springs would be the 19,255, so our total payment at that point in time, which we would have to make, Elsmere, Crescent Springs, they're not going to make that payment, because they're already paying us to provide this service for them, is $150,500, so, the cost with the Earlanger Center, if we looked at the total cost, and this is a 2% increase of what would happen in the year 1819, okay, this would be fiscal year 19, all right, our outlay is going to be $2,054,000, if we stay on our own, that's the cost that we're going to have to have. Now, you've got the $500,000 setting back, right, that's in the 911 cell money, there's been some debate about whether or not we can use that for radios, there's been some debate on both sides about saying yes, saying no, personally think that's part of telecommunications, we could use it, however that's for the way, but even if you can't use it for the radios, you could use it for operations, so it can supplement the other part of this, so you can use that $500,000, either way you look at it, all right, so, again, I did the revenues, 18 and 19, moving those up a little bit, again, by 2% in what it is, the 911 cell phone monies I took up by 2%, franchise fee 2%, Elsmere's payment 2%, but I dropped Crescent Springs, because the new contract is the $108,000, so attributed that to them, so we'll have $1,200,000 in there. If you look at the cost, all right, if in fact we go with the county, all right, what the police department, you're going to hear from them in just a minute, what they would want to do is add two more personnel, if they get rid of the dispatch center, they'd have to add two more personnel inside for some issues that, that I'll let Chief Wilson talk about, but that's what that cost would be, the CTI, we still have monies in there because of the radio connectivity, the MDC connectivity, and some things like that, replacements, that's still going to be in there, it's about $57,000, $58,000, again, the radios are going to come out, no matter what we do, we still are going to have to buy those radios again, all right, so if in fact we decided that in July 1st of 2018, we were not in the dispatch business any longer, we were merged with the county dispatch center, we would still have to pay about 900, or $696,000, okay, again, no, 500 of that is setting back in that 911 cell money, okay, that we can use, whether we use it before or after, okay, so the note there that I put down, the radios are a one-time purchase and will not reoccur, all right, and you're going to have to replace them as we go along, but not that major purchase, we could use the cell phone monies in the bank to offset the cost of the radios, or operations either way, after year one cost of the added personnel and IT, it would be approximately $221,000 is approximately what we would spend additionally in the police department budget for those added personnel and any other costs that were associated with the record-keeping and whatever else they wanted to do. If in fact we stay alone, okay, and we do this, then after that very first year, in year 2019 and 2020, our costs are going to go back up, so our operational costs will be about $1.2 million, so the difference in those two numbers is what you can see, the very next one's down there to the 227, that's the 2019, eight, or 201920 number, again, that's the 2% increase that we put in there. You can see on the numbers that it just financially, staying in this business with the way things are right now, is going to be costly to the City of Earlanger. There are two other things I want to caveat this with, so you heard tonight from Chief Wilson earlier about increase in retirement, if in fact the proposal goes through, or the recommended increases go through for the year 2019, 2020, it's going to increase, that's the second part that I've given you, it's going to increase the City of Earlanger's retirement cost by about a million dollars, it's $980-some thousand, the way things stand today, with what salaries are made today, and how they are for this year's budget, if those increases go in, and the proposal that we've seen, and I think you saw it maybe at the mayor's group Sunday, or Saturday, from Mr. Warnock, because I got, I printed out some of the things he had, you know, they're thinking hazardous duty's going to go to 44.20% from what it is right now at 31.55, non-hazardous is going to go from 19.18 to 26.40. They've also made some assumptions, if you look at what they're doing and making some assumptions, they're saying that those funds will not grow, the state police, they put a 0% growth on it, right, they went to CERS, and they went, or the state police, or the state retirement, they did 0% increase, what they did with the state or the county retirement system was put a 2% increase, well, if there's anybody here that thinks that, in fact, if they increase our retirement rates by that much, and our budget is going to go up that million dollars, if they think we're going to still be hiring people, and not laying off people, and there's going to be an increase in our payroll, or you're going to be able to give raises to our employees, you're wrong, it's not going to happen, that 2% increase is not going to occur, and when it doesn't occur, that's only going to make those numbers worse in the long run, so that situation is there, it's going to get worse before it gets better, you heard Senator McDaniel say it, when they were talking about it, and they're talking about the reform that's going to come in the special session, and his one comment was, nobody's going to be happy, it's probably a true statement, so there's going to be pain on all sides, so again, I think we have to think about operationally what we're doing today, knowing that those. So there's gonna be pain on all sides. So again, I think we have to think about operationally what we're doing today, knowing that those things are coming down the road. And if in fact you can look to streamline, consolidate, do some things, you probably need to take that, uh, and, and, and do it when we can. There's a couple other things here. Talk about the 911 cell money. How safe is the 911 cell money? Well, our governor just redid that whole board. And again, there's no county officials on the board now. There are no city officials on the board. There is one citizen on the board. He took it from 15 members to five. There is one citizen that's an accountant on that board. The rest of them are governor, or governor appointees to departments that, or departments of the state. So the cities and the counties have absolutely no representation on that board whatsoever today. Now, they decide how those 911 cell monies are disseminated. They make the recommendations of the legislature and do all those kind of things. I'm not saying that it's gonna change. I, I don't know that. I do know that there's always talk about doing that. So from a financial standpoint, there are a lot of ifs, ands, and buts about what's gonna happen in the future. That I just want to be, make sure everybody was aware of. We, we, we started meeting with the county and started going through all this stuff, and again, we're gonna have the chiefs up here in just a minute. The county has committed to do a few things. Um, first of all, they've committed to upgrade their existing CAD and records management system. That upgrade, I believe, has been ordered. They can correct me if not, and should be probably installed sometime in March or April of next year. Be up and running. The way we understand it, all the operational things that we have been discussing about what we need to be able to do to operate or end that upgrade, we're going to witness some of that. We're gonna go somewhere where it's live and, and see it working to, to verify all of that. However, everything that we have seen so far leads us to believe that everything operationally we have asked for will be accountable there, to be able to do that. Training of our personnel. So there's a couple different things here. So one is gonna have to be trained on the new system, right, and the new radio system. That training would all be with the county. Um, they've also agreed to hire all of our personnel. Uh, and they've also agreed to create a position, all right, for Dave Leonard, so that he would be in some position of supervisory authority over there to make decisions. That definitely helps our chiefs make, I think, their decision about having that go-to person in there that they know, they have a history with and things. Mr. Leonard has a very unique history. He used to work for Kenton County. He worked for us all these years, so he knows both very well. It's gonna be a much, I think, added addition to that system and be a big benefit for us having him there. And the way there's an ordinance that exists today that created the 911 Center Board, okay? If in fact we go on that board, we will have our police chief on that board. That goes from seven members right now to nine members. So what it does is it adds our police chief to it, right, the way the ordinance exists today. It adds our police chief to it and adds a member of the fiscal court to it, so it takes it from seven to nine. That board always has to stay 51% law enforcement simply because of, of, of the, the computer systems that they have inside the communication centers and stays there. That, that ordinance exists today as, as, as it stands. The timing of this is, is something that's really, I think, important, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about what we're going to do because equipment's going to have to be ordered. Whether or not we stay in business or not, they're going to have to execute some of those options that were in the bid in order for us to maintain our center, if we want to do it that way. And/or the other way, they're going to have to add additional equipment to their center, right, that was gonna be here and be there, um, for the radio system. The upgrade, like we said, to the CAD. Also, they have agreed to transfer all of our data that's in our existing system to their system and, and, and take care of those costs, which was, I know, a big deal for our police department. Again, all of those are timing issues. So if in fact we were going to do this and this new upgrade gets in there in March or April, if our dispatchers can get over there and get trained, the, along with their dispatchers, that system at the same time, kind of does away with the two trainings. Also, it gives our dispatchers time, if in fact they're in there and the county dispatchers, to get used to each other from that July 1 date on with the radio system going live in October or November of next year. Again, that's gonna be training for all of the dispatchers to do. At least those people would be sitting in there with that new system. They would have three or four months to be working with that, become comfortable with it, before something new was then pushed upon them, like the radio system's going to be. Um, so the timing of this, that's why we're, we're looking at those kind of dates, and I'll follow up on that in just a minute. I've asked the chiefs to please speak about the operational side. I can give you the ifs and ands and buts about the financial side of this. But we all know that the operations part of this is the most important part of this. So I've asked Chief, uh, Wilson and Chief Whitaker and also Manager Leonard to speak about that, so, um, whichever way we want to go first.
Well, I'm sure some of you have some questions about, uh, why and what's gonna be different. So if you have any questions, before I go into any shpeals, please ask them now. Nothing? Patty, nothing?
No, I've already spoken with all of you.
All right.
Where my heart is.
Dispatch is a luxury that we've enjoyed here at Earlanger for 30-plus years. I'm not, well, I think it's probably longer than that, since the police department's been here. It's very expensive. It is, uh, something that police and fire have relied upon. Um, you know, it's, it's been a great service to all the citizens of Earlanger and Elsmere, and then the last 10 years, Crescent Springs. Times are changing. Things are getting more expensive and you have to really outweigh or weigh your options of what you're going to do. You know, the, the cost-benefit analysis, I'm not an accountant, but you heard expenses are going up and those are just gonna continue to go up. And like Mark said, the timing is the most important thing here because the equipment has to be ordered. We have to make our decision if we're gonna stay in business or if we're going to go through with a merger because the timing now is critical. We have to order it, get it installed, go through these expenses, train our people. And then next November, October, whatever, whenever the radio project gets done, then the entire Northern Kentucky region is going to go onto a new digital radio system where there's going to be more training, so. Um, and then the city's just going to keep experiencing this rising expense year after year after year. We all know that the retirement's going up. Equipment's not getting any cheaper. Nothing's getting less, less expensive. If we do it, if we make that decision now to do that, we can start gearing ourselves to make that move, and then when all the equipment is bought and installed, we can get our people trained in a fashion where they're gonna understand the new software system. And the, and the reason that we would go with the county's CAD and software system is simply because they have 180 to 200 users currently on their system. And we have 75 or 80. So it's gonna be a lot less for us to learn and train our people and then we can move on to the radio system at that point. I'm not gonna say it's inevitable that we make this move, but it's, uh, it's, it's a decision that you all have to make. Um, it's gonna be different. It's gonna be a lot, there's gonna be some obstacles. Uh, I think we can make it work. It's gonna be a little, it's gonna be a lot of changes, but, uh, you know, we got a lot of bright people here and they're gonna be able to, to learn it, and I don't think that the service to our people, our citizens, are gonna suffer. The county's made a lot of commitments to us and, and I, you know, and I, I believe that they are committed to making this project work.
Okay, so something just popped in. So are, are our people going to be dispatching for our citizens or are they gonna be just thrown out there and take whatever call and tell them?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a transitional period, and when Dave Leonard goes out there, he's gonna be that, that go-between. He'll be the liaison for that. Uh, currently, like all the dispatch centers in Northern Kentucky, everyone is suffering retention of dispatchers. Everybody's down right now. County's down six, we're down two, Boone County, Campbell County Airport.
Best job, yeah.
It is, it is, and, and you're stuck in a room. So, um, I believe from an operational standpoint, um, until they're fully trained on the new system, they would probably remain dispatching for Earlanger, Elsmere, and Crescent Springs. And of course, personnel levels are gonna dictate whether or not they dispatch for others, and I, I would assume that would happen. I think that would definitely be the case. But there's gonna be a period of time where they're gonna be, they're gonna learn it, they're gonna be trained on it, and then they're gonna be comfortable doing it for the rest of the cities that the county dispatch center serves.
Whom selfishly, I, I, you know, I want our guys and girls, our officers, to be comfortable.
Well, I think, I think that transitional period.
I come back to the arch ages when county did nothing right. I'm sorry, guys. It's the truth. It's, I mean, you know, back in the 80s and, and our officers were taking numbers before they were bonded to.
And I, and I know, uh.
Nightmares of that happening.
Tommy Thompson was, uh, is, is the new, and I say new, he's been there for a year. We've had these discussions. We've discussed our concerns with them because of those very stories that I've heard about, because in the 80s, I was in grade school.
I knew it was coming. I knew it was coming.
So, uh, we've, we've had these discussions, though, and we expressed our concerns in no uncertain terms, and we didn't sugarcoat anything. And, um, you know, that, that was a concern, but it's, I think it's been addressed, and like we talked about before the meeting, the, the guys that are here representing Kenton County tonight weren't there in the 80s.
Oh, I know.
Uh, it, I think their new leadership.
Rubbing it in, Tony. Just keep rubbing it in.
Well, yeah. New leaders and they have a whole new attitude and, and, uh, and they, you know, they can come up and defend themselves, but I, you know, been through a bunch of meetings with them, and I'm pretty comfortable that, uh, that that's not gonna be the case this time. I'm confident that's not gonna be the case this time. Yes.
First, I want to thank the county for working with us on, you know, some of the suggestions we would like to help this if we do go with the county. In your opinion, is this new system at, at least as good as ours or better?
It's different. I think with the new upgrade that they have ordered or going to order in the very near future is going to be very compatible with ours. But to be honest with you, I haven't had a computer in my car in several years, so the end users are the, the, the first responders, not, not the old guy sitting in the office, but, uh, it's different. We watched them in operation. We watched a patrolman from, uh, Kenton County, and, uh, he was a, a power user. And we had one of our, uh, younger guys out there that we consider a power user. Um, very similar. I mean, there's some obvious differences, but, um, they do the same thing, they just do it differently.
Okay.
So it's a little different, you know, but I think, like I said, our people are gonna be able to adapt to these, these things, especially the young guys. Majority of our department's under 30 years old now and they grew up on computers. I don't think I could get one turned on right now in the car, but they're, it's a different breed.
I know we have to make this decision, but do you recommend that we proceed with this, joining the county?
I, you know, from a, from a fiscal standpoint, I don't see, I don't see how you, how you couldn't.
The numbers seem to compel that, is why I'm saying it.
The numbers, and, and to be honest with you, we, I mean, we've, we've had these concerns. Patty brings up these concerns. It's gonna be a big change. It's gonna be, we've been in business forever, in, in the dispatch business.
Do you feel the doing this would jeopardize the safety of the officers or the citizens?
No, I wouldn't, no, I do not, because I wouldn't recommend it if it did. That's our, that's our goal and it always is our goal, is our safety of our people and our citizens, and to provide the best service that we can do. And, and they, you know, they're gonna work with us day in and day out, and they're not, they don't want to jeopardize. We're gonna, we're gonna do this together. It's not gonna be, so yes, absolutely. I would, I would never recommend anything that would do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. And this might be for them. Um, the, all three counties are eventually gonna be on this, is that correct? Do we know? Or is it just gonna be Kenton?
Just the radio system.
The radio system, all three counties will be on.
Okay.
Next year.
Okay, so then the counties can back each other.
Airport's gonna have theirs and regional consolidation's always, I think, out there in the future, but yes.
I had a question about the timing with the, the radio system.
Yes.
So if I understand this correctly, um, there's equipment that we're buying for our, uh, the police cars, the fire trucks, and the men, or the, the personnel.
Yes.
Is there additional equipment that we have to purchase to, to power the dispatch station?